Good evening. Welcome to the Camden City School District Board of Education's January 28th Advisory Board Meeting. It is 5:31 PM. The meeting is now called to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Camden City School District Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published on January 10th, 2025, and posted on the district website at www.camdencityschools.org. Published in the board's designated online media outlet newspapers, The Courier-Post and The Philadelphia Inquirer, filed with the Camden City Clerk and mailed to all persons. If any who have requested said notice, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and may be broadcast on local TV and the district's website at a future date. Roll call, please. Board Secretary Taylor.
Board Member, Board Vice President Jeanette Alvarez, Gabriel Camacho, Derek Galishaw, Wanda Garcia, Cameron Hudson, Danielle Jackson, Karen Merricks, Maria Perez, President Nanam D. Nelson.
Present.
You have quorum. Therefore, be it resolved that the Camden City Advisory Board of Education enter into a closed session to consider the following matters: monthly HIV reporting, contract negotiations, and safeguarding of public property. Is there a motion? Thank you, Board Member Hudson. Is there a second? Thank you, Board Member Jackson. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? We will be in closed session for 30 minutes and will return at 6:04. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome back. Therefore, be it resolved that the Camden City Advisory Board of Education return from closed session to the public session of tonight's regular board meeting. Is there a motion to reconvene back into public session? Thank you, Board Member Hudson. Is there a second? Thank you, Board Member Garcia. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. We are back. We will now have the Student Representative Administration of the Oath of Office. So if you would join me, Elijah Vargas, at the podium. I, Elijah Vargas, attest and affirm that I will share information about my school to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you for being an alternate for Eastside High. Have a seat.
We are glad to have you here, Elijah. Thank you so much for being here and taking the time to be dedicated. Elijah is one of our students from Eastside who is very dedicated and he's very active. If you ever take a look at the social media page, the Instagram page, because they don't do Facebook, they do IG at this age, and so if you take a look, you'll see a lot of the activities that he's involved in, and he just has great school spirit. And so we know that he will provide us with information about how we can do better for our students at Eastside, but also the things that are going well. So we're glad that he had the opportunity to join us midway through the year in order to be able to share. So thank you. Let's give Elijah another round of applause for being here, for showing up, and for sharing his voice with us. And so at this time, would you like to share any of your thoughts on how things are going at Eastside High School?
Thank you. So I have two things of, I have glows and groves. So the glows, I have 11. We have four Eastside High School students participated in the Despen National Honor Society for Actors. Two students received honorable mention. Eastside High School has over 100 students receiving their facility seal in multiple languages. 506 students are able to use a small multiple pools from room for lunch. The system we use to enter the lunchroom, checking student schedules for the correct lunch period, the cleanness of the building and the cafeteria. We also have an excellent Gerald-to-C program. The great communication between students and staff, overall positive feeling in the building. Guidance counselors making the small space work. And I have two things for groves. We need more choices for school lunch. And the second one, more security in the building because we have one officer going out with the gym classes and another officer used to patrol in the parking lot.
Thank you very much, Elijah, for sharing the glows and groves. You did an excellent job first time out of the gate, and we appreciate it. We'll respond to them as soon as we hear from our second board rep from Brem Medical Arts High School, Mr. Damian Irazari.
Hello, everyone. My name is Damian Irazari. I'm a senior at Brem Medical Arts High School. First, with the glows, this school year, just in general, has been an amazing school year. We haven't had any problems that I could say as of right now. The administration team at Brem Medical Arts is doing a wonderful job. Ms. Shakweke, Ms. Perry, and everyone else who works diligently for students to go into classes on time, for there to be no interruptions or distractions while instruction is taking place. So greatly appreciated for that. And yeah, so I kind of just wanted to share an idea that I had just for, as a district-wide as a whole, for high schools in general. As everyone possibly know already, I did get into Columbia University on a full ride. Thank you. So I will be attending Columbia University this fall, but I, as a person who always wants to give back to the community that I grew up in and poured everything into me, the program that gave me this full scholarship was QuestBridge. And as of right now, I've been working, I'm going to work with Ms. Shakweke and another teacher to inform our juniors, our junior class about the program, but I would like to do that at a district level because this program caters to only low-income families, which I believe is everyone within our district. And not a lot of kids know about QuestBridge or even just the opportunities that is provided for low-income families to get into these top and prestigious colleges. So I was just asking, like, is there a way that we could do like an assembly for each school where I could present QuestBridge and also just share the information and help also do like groups where I could help students apply because there's also a junior program that increases your chances of getting into the full scholarship program as well? So thank you.
Thank you, Damian. Absolutely. Thank you to Damian and to Elijah. At this time, I'll turn it to our board president to see if there are any comments or questions from our board members for our student board reps.
Thank you, Superintendent. Are there any board members that have any comments for our board reps? Vice President Alvarez?
Thank you, Board Pres. Thank you, Board Pres. I just want to congratulate you, Elijah. Welcome aboard and congratulate you, Damian, for getting your full ride. Thank you for sharing that information and how you got to where you're going and just congratulate you. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you, VP Alvarez. Any other board members? Board Member Merricks?
I'd like to say welcome aboard, and I'd like to say congratulations, and I'd like to thank you for your service for so many years on the board as a student rep. You do amazing job, and I know you're going to be amazing in college. And I love the fact that as you climb, you lift, and that's what you're doing when you want to create the program for other children. Excuse me. So I want to thank you for that and congratulations to both.
Thank you, Board Member Merricks. Any other board members? Board Member Hudson?
Yeah, I would just like to say welcome, Elijah, and congratulations. Columbia obviously is a world-renowned school. Thank you for your service the last few years advocating for the students here. And I know you're going to be amazing. You've got a really bright future ahead of you, and you're setting such a great example for, you know, everyone that's coming up behind you. So congratulations.
Thank you, Board Member Hudson. Board Member Garcia?
I just want to say congratulations to both of yous for the well job done that you do. I love that shirt, purple and gold. My alma mater. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Garcia. Board Member Perez?
I want to say, I want to say...
I too want to say congratulations to the two of you. And hey, guys, she got me saying this. She congratulated you on your shirt, Elijah. Remember, I'm the alumni there, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Perez. Any other board members? So I echo everything that was said. Congratulations, Elijah and Damian. Continued a great work. Welcome aboard, and again, thank you for your service, and we definitely wish you the best along your journey. I'd like to turn it back over to you, Superintendent. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And again, your groves, I'm underscoring what the board members have already shared. We're so proud of you, and I just can't say it enough, both of you. So proud of you. And I'm not going to say, you know, because since we're throwing it out there, graduating from Camden High School, but my mother worked at Eastside High as a paraprofessional, so it's all good, it's all love, but also being an alum of Columbia University as well as our SBA, also spent time there in graduate study. We are doing something wonderful when our young people from Camden can continue the legacy of going on to any school, whether it's an HBCU, whether it is an Ivy League, whether it is community college, whether it's the military, whatever it is, we want to celebrate. Or technical schools, vocational careers, but we are proud, and we're not going to rush this moment. We will get through the rest of the presentation, but too often, we rush the moments and the opportunities to really applaud and celebrate our young people. We talk about a whole lot of other things, but can we talk about these two amazing young people who are sitting before us? We will take a look at the staffing levels of security officers at Kramer, Eastside High at Kramer, and we'll also work with our Senior Director of Nutrition on the food choices to see what we can do there, Elijah and Damian. As also, we can definitely provide opportunities for you to turnkey what you've learned through the QuestBridge program, et cetera, with our students. So thank you so much for your commitment. At this time, we are getting ready to transition into the State District Superintendent Board Presentation. So if you can join me in the front, board members, if you transition down, we can get ready to go into our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you so much for your patience. Again, we look forward to seeing everyone. We also have some very special guests who are in the room with us today. We look forward to hearing from them. And before we do that, though, I want to just open up the Superintendent's Report by, you know, thinking about us ending the month of January, and we know that during the month of January, we honor the life, sacrifices, and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The Camden City School District continuously strives to uphold the principles, the values, and the dreams shared by Dr. King because our students deserve no less. And before we move any further, we're going to shift gears for a moment and share a moment of silence for two incredible individuals. This evening, sorrowfully, we must begin with a moment of silence. Dr. Maria Medina was a devoted member of the Camden City School District and was a bilingual first-grade teacher at Davis Family School when she passed. I believe Principal Montagio is still up here. Thank you, and probably some of the staff members at Davis. We know it's been a very difficult time. Dr. Medina has been committed to the, was committed to the district for many years before she passed away. Her tenure in the district includes, she was a bilingual elementary teacher at Davis School. She also taught at Kramer. She taught at Dudley. She taught at Melina. And she also taught at Morton Village, and she began her tenure in 1994. So she committed many, many years to this district. In addition, Mr. Jose Jimenez, Mr. Jimenez worked in the district for 30 years, from 1974 until 2004. During his tenure, he also served as the Director of Bilingual and Foreign Language in our bilingual education department, and he put in place many different initiatives during his tenure in the district, some of which we are still implementing today. So please join me in taking a moment of silence for two incredible educators. And so before we go any further into the presentation that I have today, I want to take this opportunity to invite one of our guest presenters to the front today. We'd like to take this opportunity to thank Bowman and Company and our lead partner who is here today, Mr. Mike Craken, for coming today. I will, at this time, have our school business administrator, Ms. Akeisha Taylor, to come forward and formally introduce them. It is very important that we are transparent with where we are with regard to our audit, our audit and our audit findings. And while she is coming, I want to just share very quickly and briefly with you, since fiscal year 12, which was the beginning of state intervention, I'll just call out, in fiscal year 12, we had 15 audit findings, 13, 11 audit findings, and fiscal year 14, we had nine audit findings. Fiscal year 15, 21. Fiscal year 16, 25. Fiscal year 17, 27 audit findings. Fiscal year 18, 25 audit findings. Fiscal year 19, 17 audit findings. Fiscal year 20, 18 audit findings. Fiscal year 21, nine audit findings. Fiscal year 22, six audit findings. And fiscal year 23, three audit findings. That is amazing progress, and that speaks to the collective accountability. And so let's find out how you did this so far.
Thank you. Superintendent stole my thunder, but we have come a long way. We've come a long way. I'm new to the district, but have done my research prior to coming on board, and Camden City School District, as Superintendent mentioned, has come from many audit findings, whether it's regarding purchasing, internal controls. We now have three audit findings, two of them are repeat, which is not so great, but we've already put things in place for those two repeat audit findings to not be a finding for the current 24, 25 of you. So we are excited about that. With that, Mike Craken, if you could please come up and share the financial report and audit for the community. It is a requirement that the audit is discussed at a reading. It is not a requirement that the auditor come, but it's a good idea to have the opinion of the auditor come. Mike?
Thank you. As the Superintendent and the Business Administrator discussed, we've come a long way in the past couple of years. In the 2024 audit report for the year ended June 30th, 2024, there are three findings again. Two of them are non-compliance findings with how the district reports ASSA and DRTRS to the state. And we've been working with the Business Administrator to hopefully resolve those. And then the third finding had to do with the National School Lunch Program and the meal count and the reporting of meals. We've reviewed the issues with the school business administrator, and we hope that that also won't repeat next year. In the board packet, there was a synopsis. I'll briefly go over some financial numbers. The total fund balance on the governmental funds was a total of $59 million. Of that, $13 million was reserved for capital projects. $10 million was reserved for maintenance, $1 million for emergency reserve. $4.7 million were encumbrances at year end that will roll into the fiscal year 25 budget. And additionally, there were $51 million set aside in support of the 2025 budget. On the governmental funds, that left a deficit of $21 million. The reason there's a deficit is because the state delays the last two state aid payments until after July, or after June. The total of those were $33 million. So had the district received that money before June 30th, the deficit would not have existed, and there would have been about $12 million in unrestricted, unassigned fund balance. Total revenues over the governmental funds, total of $540 million with total expenditures just over $504 million. The change in fund balance this year was a positive $36 million, which increased fund balance from $29 million to just over $65 million for total governmental funds. Again, we've seen a lot of growth in the Finance Department with the reduction of the findings, and we hope to continue our work with the Finance Department to help continue to reduce audit findings. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the Superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. No, you're fine.
Thank you. We definitely appreciate it. Thank you to SBA Taylor and also to Mike Craken and our partners at Bowman for ensuring that we continuously improve in our financial stewardship. As was shared by Mr. Craken, we have, again, three audit findings, but we have already begun to, and SBA Taylor is working on the corrective action plan to ensure. Our goal is zero. I like round numbers. We're getting there. We're moving in the right direction, and so that was very important to present. So thank you again. We're going to move forward with another very important topic. I think we have displayed on the screen the agenda for today, and you can see there are a few focused topics, inclusive of a student spotlight that we are very excited about. As with all board meetings, we are going to focus in on these key topics to highlight during this January meeting. And as I said before, the topics are in front of you. So if we move to the next slide, our main January-focused topic is our CCSD Safe Haven Commitment, Know Your Rights. Putting students first, all are welcome in the Camden City School District. So again, in the Camden City School District, as we shared last month, and we will continue to reiterate, we are deeply committed to creating a safe, inclusive, and supportive environment for all students and all families, especially during times when their safety and dignity are at risk. Recent discussions about federal policies targeting immigrant families challenge the very values of equity, justice, and humanity, and define our, that define our district and our community. That's why we proudly reaffirmed our 2020 Resolution Number 165, which was put in place school year 1920, declaring our schools as sanctuaries where every child can learn, grow, and thrive without fear. We stand united in rejecting actions that threaten the well-being of our students and our families. Camden's diversity is our strength, and we remain dedicated to our mission to protect and uplift every child who walks through our doors. At this moment, I'd like to take this opportunity to invite Ms. Kimberly Vow from M.I.M.M. Schools, who will be sharing a few resources about how they are supporting us, not only here in the Camden City School District, but throughout the city. Ms. Vow, please come forward at this time. Let's give Kim a round of applause as she comes forward. She's a partner, and we don't know everything, so we have to work together to make sure that we are building the fabric that's going to protect our children and our families. And M. Schools has been a great partner with the district since school year 1920, and we are glad that we had a five-year partnership before something like this occurred. And so she's going to come with a presentation. This will not be the only time that we're sharing information on this critical topic, but please take notes, share this information. It will be on our website. We want to inform our community. So Kim, you can feel free to come over. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, CCSD, for this opportunity, for allowing M. Schools to speak on the community efforts that we have been doing to support all of our students and our families regardless of their immigration status and who we are. We're an immigrant-led, non-profit organization, and we are the only immigrant and non-profit organization in South Jersey supporting our immigrant community. All of this work is personal, as I was part of a mixed-ass family, and my mother was deported when I was seven years old, so I understand the impact of deportation rates as it triples down to where it was born, children in our schools, as well as I was a former educator in Philadelphia schools. So I understand also the many hats that our educators are currently playing in our schools. And next slide, please. I don't know how the presentation was going. So I am going to translate in Spanish. I do know that there are some Spanish speakers here, so I want to honor my Spanish-speaking folks. Hola buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Kimberly Vow. Yo soy la directora de M. Schools, que es una organización sin fines de lucro apoyando familias inmigrantes. Y sono la única organización sin fines de lucro apoyando familias inmigrantes en South Jersey. Y yo este fue impactada de lo que estaba pasando ahorita, como mi mamá fue deportada cuando tenía siete años, y sé entiendo cómo es cuando los estudiantes están con ansiedad y con emoción por la causa de deportación. I'm not sure who's managing. Is it up there? And so I will just keep speaking as we're pulling up the presentation, but we are supporting, we have been supporting as Superintendent McCombs as Superintendent McCombs had mentioned, we've been in partnership with Camden City School District since 2020 to ensure that our schools and our classrooms are safe and inclusive regardless of immigration status. Now, immigration is not a Latinx issue. It is affecting other immigrant communities, right? So we definitely want to acknowledge that in Camden City, there is a large Haitian-Creo-speaking population, Vietnamese population, and Cambodian population amongst others. So this is not just affecting our Spanish-speaking folks or our Latinx communities. And so we have been amongst, with CCSD, with other schools as well, charter networks and Renaissance schools to ensure that our families are equipped with the Know Your Rights workshops that we do have. We want to make sure that our parents and our families and our students know the rights that they have regardless of their immigration status. And so we understand that schools are doing everything that they can currently to protect our students regardless of who comes into the front of the school and asks for their information. So under the Fifth Constitution, we all have a right to remain silent, even our students and even our family members. So that means if our students come up to us, to educators or even to an administrator asking for, what do I do? Or handle situation with ICE? Or, you know, our family has anxiety. We don't know what to do if ICE were to come to our doors. And so we affirm that you have a right to remain silent. You have a right not to sign any documents. And we understand the impacts of raids and deportation and how it trickles down into the classrooms and how that shows up. And why does it matter for us to pay attention to this? It's because it affects the classroom, the school, the district as a whole. Because currently, right now, our families are making the tough decision to keep their children at home, right? So we understand that that comes with a myriad of challenges. We understand that if a parent does not continue to take their child to school, then they can get in trouble, right? They can, diapers can be called and other situations. So we want to make sure that our families feel safe and protected. And, you know, our community is facing, not only they're facing fears of deportation in terms of when they are picking up their child or dropping off their child to school, but also when they are coming to school, how does that show up into the classroom? So we are currently providing a series of professional development sessions to our school leaders and to our educators, not only having a protocol and a face-to-face resolution in place that trickles down and communicates to our security, to our secretary in front, because they are the ones that open the doors, right? They're the ones that allow us inside the schools. So as we walk in, right, head detectors, all of that, security guards must know this information that they should not allow ICE inside the schools or give out any information they have ever the right to do so. And so we are communicating this to educators and to administrators to ensure that everyone has this mutual understanding of what to do. And not only that, we're also providing professional development sessions for educators on what to do, how to socially and emotionally provide strategies to ensure that the student is driving the classroom. We cannot change their emotions. We cannot change if they feel sad or how they're feeling about the situation. But what we can do is come together, right? Utilizing the resources that we do have in the schools, communicating with counselors and social workers to provide additional support, additional mental health support for our children who are currently experiencing some fears, right? They don't know whether or not they're going to find their parents at home when they come back from school. Next slide, please. So this is what I was mentioning. Regardless of anyone's immigration status, we all have rights. And alluding to some of the federal policies that are still in place, right? And this is still true to this day. We want to make sure that we are protecting the immigration of our students. So in any way, shape, or form, should we be asking our students or for their families documentation status? What we should be doing now is creating an action plan, encouraging that our families go to the DMV, get their driver license. Because in the state of New Jersey, regardless of your status, our families and even our youth with driving age are able to get their driver license. So we want to make sure that we could communicate this information with our families and students so that they actively have identification from their state. Next slide, please. And so when an ICE agent does come into the school or tries to come into the schools, we do want to ensure that we are communicating with their security guards, one, to not allow them to let them in or sharing information about our students, but two, also asking for a judicial warrant, right? So most of the times, ICE agents just come in or without a judicial warrant. So we must ask in order for them to make an arrest, and actually legitimate arrest, they have to present a judicial warrant, signed by a judicial judge issued by the United States Court of Law. An invalid warrant is a statement or a letter from the DHS, from the Department of Homeland Security. So as you see here, it's very, very tiny. But one of the things to really remember is, one, if it was issued by the United States Court, signed by a judicial judge, and if that person that they're looking for, their name is the correct name, spelled correctly. Next slide, please. And so another thing that we can practically do is continuously share resources, but also share opportunities for learning for our families. So one of these is our upcoming family workshop that my colleague, Jose, who is here, who he will be leading our family workshops. This will be livestreamed on Monday. All are welcome. It's not just folks from CCSD. So we are opening this to everyone in the community. So we want to make sure that we are sharing this information as much as possible. We do have Haitian Creole and Spanish, and we are working on getting interpreters as of right now. And we do have resources in the front table with Mr. Ramos. We do have Know Your Rights front pagers in multiple languages, not just in Spanish, but Haitian Creole and Vietnamese. We want to make sure that our families have this information, whether in their wallet. We do have red cards which have the constitutional rights that we all have regardless of our status. So this is just a reminder that our families and students can carry their wallet. And while for it, they do, you know, get in front of an ICE agent or an ICE agent is questioning an individual, they have to say I have a right to remain silent and share their red card. And I cannot stress how important it is to create an emergency plan. So I urge, if you are representing a school right now and you haven't had an opportunity to have a session with us or a professional development session with us, please contact me. I do have my email up here where we can coordinate a professional learning as far as how we come together to make sure that our students and our classrooms thrive, right? Tapping into that social, emotional learning and mental health piece. We want to be proactive rather than reactive, right? We want to make sure that we have a plan and that we are coming together and also leveraging organizations in our community to make sure that we are communicating with our families in case if a family member does get deported and it's affecting our children and how they show up in school. So we are leading a professional development with our school leaders tomorrow, which will go into more detail as to how a family emergency plan should look like and how families should communicate that with our leaders, but also more best practices on what to do in the event that, you know, law enforcement agent does come to our schools. And so with that, I leave my information here. And again, I thank Camden City School District for allowing M-Schools into the district and allowing us to just share all this information. And we know that these times are tough for many of us, even if we don't relate, you know, right away with what is going on. But it is affecting us as a community as we are standing here in the district. And so thank you so much and have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And again, we look forward to continuing to maximize the benefits and leverage the benefits of a partnership with our partnership with M-Schools. I also want to take the opportunity to thank the Camden Education Fund for their support. They are actually funding the M-Schools partnership to ensure that this very much needed partnership and the benefits of it are spread throughout the city because we're concerned about all of our young people. I also want to remind everyone that all of our presentations, our board presentations that are posted online, the videos, are translated into Spanish by Latino Spirit. And so we have also been doing that since about 2019, 2020. And so everything that is posted here of family members, community members who may not speak English as their native language, they can get the translation in Spanish. And we are working on translating into other languages as well. So again, we want to thank our partners. And moving forward with the next slide, just as a reminder, not as a reminder, but to extend. I want to extend a special invitation to each one who may be viewing this later and each one of you here to spread the word that on Monday, February 3rd at 6:00 p.m., we will host a live in-the-house session on our district Facebook page, featuring our valued partner, M-Schools. During this session, they will speak directly to our families, offering support and valuable insights. If you know anyone who would benefit from joining us on this live Zoom workshop, please encourage them to tune in on Monday, February 3rd at 6 o'clock on our Facebook page, the Camden City School District's Facebook page. We are fortunate to have the partners that we do who not only join us for live sessions, but also, as was stated, will be providing professional development for all school leaders tomorrow morning at 9:30 a.m., equipping us to better serve our families. We will also be setting up teacher professional development workshops and some of our schools have already taken advantage of having workshops in their buildings for teachers from M-Schools. So flyers are available for this in-the-house session outside of this auditorium for you to take and share and distribute. Let's make sure that we are united in this effort. Next slide, please. And so again, just to further elaborate on this important point, as you see on the screen, the Camden City School District Protocol for school staff and security officers in the event of an ICE visit has been disseminated to our Camden City School District staff, to all staff. As you can see here, this is just a synopsis of what was shared. But to ensure clarity and preparedness, we've established clear protocols for all district staff to handle any potential immigration and customs enforcement presence at our schools. These protocols are designed to prioritize the safety, dignity, and privacy of our students and their families. Our protocols include immediate notification and verification. So when someone comes in, we will not let anyone through the door unless they have a legitimate warrant, which we included a copy of what that looks like in our communication. Second protocol, restriction of access to school grounds. Third, the protection of students' and family privacy. Next, steps to ensure staff and student safety. And finally, engaging with legal counsel and communication with the community. So this information has been shared, and we will continue to refine our efforts as we go through this crisis because we are learning as we go, but we are prepared. So we're not doing the plan as we're flying yet. We're prepared. We will just revise as we need to moving forward. Next slide. And we want to shift gears just for a moment. I mentioned earlier that we have a student spotlight. It is always, always so exciting to share. It's okay. It's okay. We all make mistakes. To share our student spotlight. So we want you to take a moment first to watch this video, and then I will share with this beautiful and amazing young lead.
Since the 1970s, Philadelphia Dance Company, or Philidanco, has had a major influence on the dancing world of Philadelphia. From ballet to hip-hop, tap to jazz, Joan Myers-Brown has paved the way of dancing, especially for young African-American kids in Philadelphia for almost 55 years.
The Philidanco is a name that stands for the Philadelphia Dance Company. But it's now four dance companies and two dance schools.
The mission of Philidanco is to combat the fundamental racism embedded in the dance world. Since its creation, Philidanco has provided a place for Black dancers to learn and grow in.
Joan Myers-Brown created this company for access, mainly for her dancers who were dancing in her school who were now old enough to get into companies auditioning, weren't able to have these opportunities. And she created a gateway to have a space, have a place where we can perform professionally and tour nationally and internationally. And to this day, she still is a pioneer.
Philidanco has provided a safe haven to be in, highlighting the importance of learning from people that dancers can relate to, according to instructor Tommy Wahid Evans.
And you're learning from people who are a lot like you and coming from a similar type of background and aesthetics. And those things are very, very important when you're trying to grow and learn and be in a space that you can be comfortable and flourish in.
This place is like a family. So to have that support around you that makes them like, okay, I can do this.
I feel like they give us a lot of confidence because there's not a lot of Black girls in ballet. So Joan is trying to get a lot of Black girls in ballet. And I feel like that's kind of impactful.
Young dancers at Philidanco express the impact dancing at Philidanco has made on their lives.
It has a lot of opportunities, especially for young Black dancers, specifically male, because there's not a lot of males in the arts. So it opens a lot of doors for us.
She made this because what she couldn't do when she was a child. So it's like now I can do what she couldn't. So I feel like I need to honor her by doing that.
It just kind of makes me more like confident in different areas. Because when I started dancing, I was kind of shy. So it kind of had that big impact on me of being more confident.
Philidanco roots were for serving Black dancers. But now Philidanco has evolved to become an all-inclusive company, according to Janine Beckles.
We're all-inclusive. I always have to tell people that. People just automatically assume that we're a Black dance company, and we're not. We're inclusive of all colors and religions. And I would say her emphasis was Black dance, but we're all-encompassing.
We've been around 55 years. We've been to 20 different countries, five different continents. And we're still trying to get Black girls in ballet companies. And we're still trying to provide opportunities for dancers.
For the past 55 years, Philidanco has forged a path of excellence and inclusivity that sets it apart from other companies. However, there's still work that needs to be done.
Excellent job. So you can see the journalism skills that went into that. And we're going to bring her and her teachers, her wonderful instructors and her family up in a moment. But we want to congratulate Shemira. We want to congratulate you for your outstanding achievements at the WHYY Youth Media Awards. Out of more than 100 video submissions evaluated by a 20-judge panel, Shemira's talent shone brightly, earning her three trophies. She won first place. Everyone say first place. This is our student, so we're going to do it up. She won first place in news reporting for the high school division with her piece on She won first place in news reporting for the high school division with her piece on Philadelphia bike lanes, where she contributed to both writing and production. She also earned third place for Philidanco, where she excelled as the lead reporter. And additionally, Shamira received a judges award highlighting her exceptional skills and creativity. CNN, watch out. We are incredibly proud of Shamira's accomplishments and can't wait to see you continue to shine. So at this time, without further ado, Shamira, would you please join us on the stage along with your incredible instructors and your family to receive a special district recognition? Can I ask our board president, as well as our board vice president, and anyone else who wants to come up, to come up? Yes, let's give it up for our student, Camden City School District's own Ms. Shamira Taylor, for showing them how it's done. Come on over, and I'm going to read. I'm going to read the certificate, and this is a certificate. Shamira, you have to talk up right there, so that... Okay, so you can come up too.
I could, but...
Oh, okay. Oh, we can go down. We have...
Okay.
You sure? Okay, all right, all right. So this certificate of achievement is proudly presented to Shamira Taylor in recognition of your outstanding achievements at the WHYY Youth Media Awards. Your accomplishments bring pride to the Camden City School District and inspires others to strive for excellence. Signed by myself, a training team of Combs State District Superintendent, and Mr. Nanami Nelson, Advisory Board President. This is for you. And we also have, presented by our Advisory Board Vice President, we have roses. Doesn't she deserve one?
Yes, absolutely.
And we can't do anything without amazing instructors. Don't these gentlemen look serious? They're about business. And when we go into their classroom, they have everything in order, so thank you for what you do for our students. We enjoy our performance. So this is Board Member Appreciation Month. So if you follow our district's social media channels, you've seen, you've likely seen the amazing advisory board recognitions we've been sharing throughout this month. At this moment, I'd like to take this time to acknowledge our incredible board members. This is just a small token of our appreciation. When I call your name, please come up to receive a certificate and recognition of the Board President Nanami Nelson. Again, your steps today, it's okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Congratulations and thank you for what you do. You're welcome. Let's get a little bit of nice big picture. And thank you, Vice President Jade Alvarado. Thank you for what you do. Mr. Gabriel Camacho, one of our newest board members, Mr. Camacho. Thank you. Mr. Derek Galishaw, our second newest advisory board member, Mr. Galishaw. Ms. Molly Garcia. Thank you. Mr. Cameron Hudson, Cameron Hudson. All right. Ms. Danielle Jackson, I know she had to go, she was not feeling well, and Ms. Karen Thank you for your service. Thank you. You're welcome. And that was certainly not least, Ms. Maria Correntes. And Mr. Hudson, you can keep on walking. We're out to the car. Thank you. Absolutely. And we'll just get a group photo and continue. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Okay, and shifting gears to one of our, another presentation that we want to share today. We have a presentation from the Rowan University Rutgers Camden Board of Governors. I'd like to welcome at this time Ms. Melissa Thompson, Pre-doctoral Fellow, to present a proposal to the Camden City School District Advisory Board for the use of the recently demolished Broadway building site. This is just a proposal. There is no business or action, but we wanted the board to hear this proposal. You may come up. Thank you. Let's give Ms. Thompson a warm Camden City School District welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Move this out of your way, so you have space.
There you go.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. Board President, Vice President, thank you for having me here. So my name is Melissa Thompson. I am a Pre-doctoral Fellow at the Board of Governors, but I'm also the Director there, or a Director there of Special Projects, specifically this project. And I'm so thankful and happy to be able to bring this proposal to you all to explain a little bit more about the projects. I'm not sure if the slides transferred in terms of the update, so bear with me as I look on and narrate. I can get started, if that's okay. So again, my name is Melissa Thompson. I am a resident here in the city, a property owner here in the city, and I moved to Camden from Newark originally, is it this one? Okay. In 2015, when I moved, I moved as a result of getting placed in a Camden City, well, a school in Camden, KIP, as a first grade teacher, and I lived right there down the street. And when I was there, I recognized... Okay, so here goes the presentation. So again, I'm representing the Board of Governors, and I'm sure folks in the room know about the Board of Governors, but essentially, we exist to be able to coordinate and to work with the Edin Meds District and development projects in Camden. So I'm a Director there. If we can keep going. Contact information, if you guys would like it, you can keep going. So this was when I was a teacher, and a lot of the students that you'll see there are also in the program that I'll be discussing in a little bit. If you see my face, that's how I felt when I first started, right? And now, fast forward 10 years, I get to be able to do this amazing work. When I first started at KIP, one thing I said to my students, or a lot of things, but one of the things that I said to them was, if I love you, that means I'm going to work to make your lives better, and that's what I've been doing ever since, or I've been working to do that. One of the ways in which I wanted to do that was to get my doctorate. So right now, I'm at Rutgers in the Department of Public Policy and Administration, working to think through specifically, what does it mean to do equitable development and development in a way that really centers our community? And that has been the research that I started with, and you can go to the next slide. It is also the research that I currently do. So right now, again, I'm a Director at the Board of Governors, and when Jeff Nash, our CEO, brought me on, he asked, hey, how do we get a grocery store here in the city? And of course, that has a very storied history as to what does it mean to get a grocery store here in the city. And building on the model of former Mayor Redd and the former CEO of the Board of Governors, Mayor Redd, we decided to think through, what does it mean to do a food cooperative here in the city? A food cooperative is a community-owned grocery store. So the first two letters of COOP, that should help us remember, community-owned grocery store. And ever since then, I've been researching and thinking through, what does it mean to actually do this and how do we do it? Because it's a very hard feat, and I believe that I've been able to kind of put together a model with the help of some very important and wonderful people in this room to be able to do so. You can go to the next slide. So the proposal that Superintendent McCombs mentioned refers to a project that is the building that you see in the middle, or that was there in the middle that now is demolished, the Broadway Street School. The Board of Governors is seeking to acquire that project, and on that lot, what we propose is a food cooperative. The lot next to it, and I'm pointing this out because it will be important for the presentation as I go on, but the lot next to it, 510 to 518 South Broadway, the Board of Governors currently own that lot and will be activating that lot through this project. You can go to the next slide. So, again, like I mentioned, the project in and of itself seeks to have on the grounds floor, a food cooperative. On the second floor, some sort of health clinic or county clinic, and then floors three and above, housing, specifically teacher and educated workforce housing. What I didn't mention is that when I first was a teacher at KIP, I thought to myself, there's not enough Black and Brown teachers in the classroom, and there's also not enough teachers that live in Camden. I was the only one, and what I decided to do was to buy a house and to do teacher housing. That house ended up burning down. However, fast forward 10 years, now I get to think about what does it mean to do this at this level? So the purpose again is to be able to think through, how do we establish this thing? And of course, a lot of us in this room know that development is oftentimes a difficult thing to take place, and what my goal has been as Director is, what does it mean for us to attract a developer to be able to develop this project? The project, of course, has to go through all the stages of the procurement process and RFP processes and all of those things, but my goal has been, what does it mean to create a narrative that really centers our students and our youth and our families? And that's what the proposal that I'm presenting today to you all is. You can go to the next slide. So what is a COOP, again, community-owned grocery store? I put this slide here just because it truly is a different model to think about. Oftentimes, when we think about development, we think about capitalistic models, and a cooperative model is not typical capitalism as we see it, right? It's about building solidarity, and these values are super important to this work. So things like self-help, self-responsibility, solidarity, equity, those are really things that we want to make sure that we prioritize in the model. To the left-hand side, what you'll see is the COOP principles. The most important ones specifically for this presentation is education, training, and information. Is everything okay? Okay. The most important one is education, training, and information, and the model that we're building is specifically around that. Go to the next slide. So Board Members, I've left a piece of paper with you all that has this slide there, but the purpose of the COOP is to be able to serve as a community economic development vehicle, to be able to foster a food agency where youth lead a culture of health. A lot of big terms and words, but I'm only sharing this to say, all of these things are built into this model as much as I can, and thinking through, what does it mean to bring the research and make it very practical? Because oftentimes, it can be very theoretical. And this process, which I'm hoping to be able to bring everyone in, because this COOP has to be community-led and community-owned, should be able to pull everyone in. All this information will be, I believe, on the website eventually, and they're also, it also can be found on the COOP Camden website. You can go to the next slide. So the way that we thought about this is to be able to start the food cooperative, we thought about, let's start with our youth. Let's center their well-being, and to do so, I found a program out of UC Berkeley called Y-Plan. Y-Plan stands for Youth Plan, Learn, and Act Now. And what it does is it brings students into the heart of city planning. And this past fall semester, we did a version of Y-Plan at Mighty Writers with Derek Galishaw, who's the Site Director there, who's been amazing and super supportive as we did this work. The Y-Plan projects, again, invited our students into city planning. They did the site visit, they did a SWOT analysis, they did all these cool things to be able to really help them understand, okay, how do we do this thing? And what we'll be doing, and of course, everything is subject to board approval, but what we'll be doing is we will be working to establish Y-Plan for the next few years as we build out the COOP. You can go to the next slide. So what are our guiding theories? Again, as I've been like scouring and reading and thinking through, what exactly, how do we build a model that is truly equitable and truly centers, I think, the most important things as a resident here? I think, not I think, I have also worked really hard to establish health. So one of the first models you'll see is nurturing a culture of health, which is, how do we get health to be a shared value here? Strengthening Camden, addressing food and nutrition security, centering youth well-being, and establishing community ownership. So those are our guiding principles and practices, and associated with all of them is theoretical background and framing. A lot of that framing in theory is available at the front, if you want to grab those materials. But really, I'm trying to center these theories as we build out the model. Go to the next slide. So on December 17th last year, we had a final event for our students at Mighty Writers, and you'll see those pictures to the left of the screen. What you see on the right is the lot that I referenced at the beginning, so 510 to 518 Broadway. Our students were able to create art, so ART stands for Art That Activates, Real Foods That Heal, and Technologies That Transform. And the hope is that they'll be able to use those art projects to be able to activate the lot that you saw there. And going forward for the spring semester, what we'll be doing is we'll be at Urban Promise to be able to establish this. I say that to say, part of the, or one of the most important things at the core of my heart is to be able to teach our youth ownership, and thinking through, what does it mean for us to take ownership of our bodies, of our communities, all of those things? So my hope is to be able to pilot Y-Plan after school and eventually be able to present that back to you all, so that we can think through, what does it mean to really do something similar, Y-Plan in schools more broadly, so we can talk about these things and teach our students the things that they need, ownership, equity, cooperation, all those things that... equity, cooperation, all those things that aren't traditionally taught in schools. So that is the hope, and that is the project. The most important thing of this whole entire thing is that the COOP has to be community-led. It has to be community-driven, it has to be community-benefiting, it must be that. It cannot be Melissa or the Board of Governors doing anything, right? It has to be community, welcoming community and saying, this is your project to own. So as we continue to build, our first step is to be able to establish some steering committees. And that information will be shared on our socials. And the hope is that everyone in this room, teachers, students, families, board members, everyone should be able to be a part. There is a space at the table for everyone in this project, and it cannot happen without you all in this room. So that is my call to action, my charge for you all. I am just working as a vessel, if you will, to be able to help coordinate that, to be able to hand it off to you all and to our youth, because they deserve it. So I think that's it for me. Thank you all so much. And my card is at the back, open to any questions, open to any feedback. Push the model. If something's wrong, tell me about it. I'm willing and wanting to receive your feedback, so we can make this the best that it can be, and we can get a grocery store here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you so much for sharing that amazing concept. And again, we wanted to just share that for the board, so that they can hear that presentation, and we thank you for sharing it. So one of the things that we're required to do is to present a report of student safety data system information twice a year. And so this is the report that we're going to share now. In order for our students to thrive academically and socially, emotionally, from pre-K through 12th grade, we must ensure they feel safe and fully included in their learning environment. So as a school district, we are required to report, as I shared, at a public meeting twice a year on the student safety data system under operations in CUSAC. Next slide. All students, all schools, all public schools in New Jersey, as well as all approved private schools for students with disabilities, must report annually in the student safety data system. As the state superintendent of schools, I must certify that all CCSD schools have reported by January 31st for September through December, and then again at the end of the year for the January through June data. Next slide. The incidents that are reported publicly by the New Jersey Department of Education fall into the following five categories: vandalism, violence, vandalism, substance offense, weapons offense, and confirmed HIBs. Next slide. So as you can see from the graph here, during this first reporting period of the 24-25 school year, a total of 198 incidents were reported. This figure includes all cases of violence, vandalism, substance abuse, weapons-related incidents, and HIB investigations recorded between September 1st and December 31st, 2024, by school. Next slide. And again, this will all be on our website, if you want to delve into it more later. Primary schools reported 126 incidents during the first reporting period. The key labels, the type of incident to the right. Violence is red, vandalism is yellow, substance is green, weapons is orange, and confirmed HIBs are aqua. Next slide. For the high schools, 72 incidents have been reported during the first reporting period across BPLA, Brim, Camden High, Creative Arts, and Eastside High School. Next slide. On the next four slides, I will share the breakdown in year-over-year comparisons. Later in the reporting, I will also share strategies that are happening across the district to cultivate a nurturing environment where HIB does not occur. So on this slide, we see that between September 1st and December 31st, 2024, a total of 44 HIB investigations were conducted. Thirty-eight were at the primary or family schools, and six were reported at the high schools. Of the total, 12 investigations, which is 27%, were confirmed as incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. In comparison, during the same reporting period in the 2023-2024 school year, there were 26 investigations with six confirmed HIB incidents. Next slide. In our high schools, data from September to December of the 2024-2025 school year shows six HIB investigations with two confirmed cases. In comparison, during the same period last year, there were 13 HIB investigations, of which four were confirmed. Next slide. In our primary and family schools, from September to December of the 2024-2025 school year, there were 38 HIB investigations with 10 confirmed cases. In comparison, during the same period last year, there were 13 investigations with two confirmed as HIB. Next slide. Out of the 44 HIB investigations conducted district-wide during the first reporting period, 12 were confirmed. And this chart captures the schools and the number at each location. Next slide. The next three slides will break down the founded allegations by school. What the HIB action was, the remediation or discipline, and the staff member who investigated the claim during the first reporting period, which is September through December 2024. Next slide. And again, this is a continuation of that data by school, allegation, remedy or discipline, and investigator. Next slide. And this is the final slide of the remaining schools with founded cases, inclusive of what the claim was, the remediation or discipline, and the name of the investigator, who is Next slide. Out-of-school suspension. During the 23-24 school year, we recorded a total of 155 out-of-school suspensions during the first reporting period, and that is represented by the blue bar. In the same period for the 24-25 school year, the total number of suspensions is 206, which is depicted by the red bar above each school. Next slide. During the first reporting period of the 2023-2024 school year, there were a total of 81 in-school suspensions. In comparison, for the same period in the 2024-2025 school year, there have been 76 in-school suspensions. And the same as the former slide, the blue bar reflects school year 23-24, and the red bar represents the first half of this school year. Next slide. So that is what the evidence shows, and what's more important than just sharing the evidence is what our response is going to be, what our reaction and our strategies that we put in place as a district will be, to continue to lower those incidents that we referred to. And so in the next four slides, I will share at a high level the training and practices we are implementing to foster healthy learning environments. First, across the board for all staff members in the Camden City School District, we require training through the Global Network Compliance, or Global Compliance Network, GCN program for all staff members, including district-level administrators, school administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, and other personnel. Throughout the nine hours of comprehensive PD, key topics related to today's reporting include Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, characteristics and needs of individuals who or groups at risk for harassment, intimidation, and bullying; conflict resolution strategies; cyberbullying awareness and intervention; HIB prevention and consequences; parent involvement in HIB cases; peer relationships and social norms; school climate and culture improvement; social skills and relationship building; and suicide prevention related to HIB. Additionally, this district collaborates with county resources, including the nonprofit Restorative Center, to offer free restorative justice training to community members, educators, students, and stakeholders. Restorative justice emphasizes communication and mediation rather than punitive measures, fostering the well-being of victims, offenders, and the broader community. Our administrators are actively working to integrate restorative practices into all schools. These practices align with the New Jersey-tiered system of support, a program designed to enhance student outcomes in academics, behavior, social-emotional development, and attendance. Next slide. And these additional programs, which I will not read to you, again, they will be posted on our website, additional programs and resources utilized by the district to increase positive behaviors and improve outcomes for all students are captured here. As you will see, resources include personnel and the work of school-based youth services, parent universities, anti-bullying task force, and tools like Panorama and Help Me Stop It. Next slide. And this slide outlines the implementation of trauma-informed practices in our schools. It emphasizes the importance of comprehensive training for all staff and students, including understanding trauma and recognizing its signs. It stresses the creation of safe spaces where students can express themselves and feel supported. Additionally, it highlights the need for building resilience in students through coping skills and emotional regulation techniques. Collaboration among educators, parents, and community organizations is crucial for a unified support system. And finally, the slide underscores the necessity of continuous evaluation and improvement to ensure the effectiveness of trauma-informed practices. Next slide. And finally, this slide covers three main areas: data recording documentation, professional development, and student growth. Under item three, student growth, this aims to help students build resilience and manage stress through strategies like mindfulness, social-emotional learning, and access to counseling. This concludes the SSDS reporting for Period 1. I will now transition to other important reporting areas, and then finally, district highlights. Next slide. New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, or New Jersey CUSAC. Next slide. During the November 25th Advisory Board meeting, I shared the district's most recent CUSAC placement scores from the April 2024 full review. In fiscal management, we scored 79. In operations, we increased significantly to 92%. In instruction and programming, we scored 57%. In governance, we scored 87%. And in personnel, we increased to 87%. Remember, 80 is the passing score for CUSAC. We did submit appeals, and we were not granted appeals, so these are, this is where our CUSAC standing remains as of today. Based on our final scores, the district has prepared a district improvement plan for DPR area's instruction and program and fiscal management as required for any area under 80%. The district improvement plan committee met on December 16th to share the data and gather feedback from various stakeholders, including members of our Advisory Board of Education. The goal of the committee was to determine strategies for continued implementation and ensure that we remain very clear with our communication across schools, departments, and the district. Next slide. And I will not go through all of these, because the district improvement plan is presented as one of the items on our agenda. And so if you want to read through the entire program, you can do that at your leisure. But this slide captures our instruction and program goals and strategies. You will see the goals are set to measure progress for three years and include ELA, math, and science achievement. We will use MSGPs, or median student growth percentiles, to capture teaching and learning. Next slide. Continuing with teaching and learning, here, we highlight the focus on increasing graduation rates, reducing chronic absenteeism, and ensuring curriculum development to meet the New Jersey student learning standards. Next slide. As it relates to finance, there are a few key areas we will focus on to regain all points. Together, we will focus on the annual audit process, and you heard the audit report earlier, so I won't belabor that point, which will include audit submission timelines, schedules, and auditor requested information as soon as it is requested. In the area specifically of audit findings, our data team of eight will work with the charter schools, Renaissance schools, and other internal departments to ensure that there is backup documentation to support our categorization of students. Our data team will have BA oversight to ensure we implement our own quality control measures, to ensure the ASA enrollment counts are supported by the exact same enrollment counts in Genesis, our student information system. And that work has already begun under the leadership of our new school business administrator. The district will request our auditors complete a final review of the submission prior to final certification. And then we will focus on systems to eliminate material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. Next slide. Additionally, under the area of fiscal management, we will ensure biannually that we complete the health and safety evaluation of school buildings checklist to gauge compliance and problem areas, which, with aged buildings, are many. And last, in the area of staffing, our administration will encourage support employees, including the senior director of facilities, to obtain a CEFM. And that is at the time of our assessment, but our senior director of facilities has obtained his CEFM, and we are very proud of that accomplishment. Next slide. Open enrollment, important dates. As a reminder, main round enrollment for the 25-26 school year officially began on November 26th. If you missed our countdown on social media, now's the time to explore the best-fit schools for your child. We're here to help you through the process, so don't wait. Secure your child's spot today. For more information, visit our website or contact the solution center at 856-966-2507. And now we will move on to just a few key updates. I want to always keep the board informed of where we are with the Eastside High project. Next slide. So this is the timeline, the project timeline that we've shared, and we will check in with this timeline every month. We are excited that in the coming months, we will be able to begin broader engagement around the new Eastside High. But CCIA, or the Camden County Improvement Authority, awarded the contract for demolition of Eastside High to USA Windsor in November. The building was turned over to the contractor as of December 31st. Work is beginning this month with abatement and removal of the identified historical artifacts. The public will begin to see the building come down in late spring, early summer of 2025. So again, we will continue to come back and share, and again, we look forward to engagement. And we have individuals who've signed up for committees, and we're looking forward to that process. Next slide, teaching and learning. Just a few highlights. The REAL implementation. Scholastic in Camden embarked on a partnership and launched REAL in February 2023, where this slide is a brief overview of the program. Two hundred mentors and well over 50 organizations brought energy, excitement, and dedication to children in Camden by encouraging them to read and serving as reading mentors. Next slide. But we need volunteers. Read, excel, achieve, lead. That's what REAL stands for. And so it's that time again. We're excited to announce that we are inviting our reading mentors back into our elementary and family schools at the start of the new year. And so if you would like to be a volunteer or mentor, please scan the QR code so that you can complete the mentor application, and we look forward to training you, so that you can support us in uplifting a love for literacy and reading in our young people, just as we did last year. Next slide. Here are some pictures. Pictures are worth a thousand words. The ancient Egypt, the mummification process. Here, we'd like for you to check out our Morgan Village Middle School's feature of the week, Mr. Bass's sixth-grade social studies class. The sixth-grade students were learning how to describe the process of mummification in ancient Egypt. in ancient Egypt. The students were embalmers for the day. Next slide. If you take a look at this slide, you will see at Forest Hill, our CCSD students in grades four through eight who are receiving pull-out instrumental music lessons every week. This is something that we've been able to build back in our district. Students are excited to learn and play their shiny new instruments. In the pictures displayed, you see an all-girls trumpet section at Forest Hill receiving instruction. Next slide. Eastside High is growing their music program as well. Back to Eastside, but this time inside with the students. We are excited to share that Eastside High School's music program is rapidly growing. The instrumental music class went from just a few students with instrumental interest to full classes. Mr. Bermejo, and I hope I'm not, what's the correct pronunciation? Is it? Bermejo, thank you. Bermejo, instrumental music teacher, has been building students' confidence, teaching lots of foundation and intermediate skills, and developing school pride. And you can see from the pictures that the students are engaged and excited and growing and learning. Eastside musicians played in the winter concert parade from floor to floor for the school community. We cannot wait to see the spring concert. Next slide. Drone Tech Navigators. Students in our gifted and talented classes at Cato and H.B. Wilson Schools are receiving drone instruction once a week. During that time, students are learning about the anatomy of drones and safety, participating in simulations, writing code to navigate the drones, developing collaboration skills with their peers, and so much more. Stay tuned for the finale as our scholars build their own drones in the spring. Next slide. This is just a reminder, the New Jersey Access for English Language Learners Testing Window is on the slide. Test administration begins February 3, and it will go through March 28. Please forgive that. We will update and correct that spelling mistake. Make-up testing, March 31 through April 4. It is critical that our students take this assessment. Our multilingual learners in grades K through 12 will begin taking this assessment, as I share for the New Jersey Access. Our district will be testing students in reading, speaking, writing, and listening. Student attendance is extremely important during this time, so please make sure your children get a good night's rest and that you talk to them about the importance of doing their best on these assessments. The assessments are both paper-based and computer-based unless modifications are required. If you have any questions, please reach out to your child's teacher or to your school leader. Division of Talent and Labor Relations, DTLR updates. There's information on this slide, and I will just highlight a little bit. The DTLR team is currently working to fill all remaining vacancies. The primary focus is to continue strategizing to identify and hire qualified special ed, Spanish Health and PE, and science teachers. These areas have been the most challenging to fill, and DTLR anticipates an additional eight new teachers being onboarded within the next thirty days. So our team and DTLR continues to, excuse me, offer sign-on incentives to those with certifications and hard-to-fill areas and are planning for spring hiring events for school year 25-26. The district is registered to attend various college fairs that include Rowan, the College of New Jersey, Temple, and Stockton University. DTLR is also planning to attend several diversity hiring events. Next slide. And the last portion of our report has to do with our district highlights. So on this first slide, you'll see the Camden Education Fund Supporting All Learners Grant. Here we have a few pictures from the Supporting All Learners Grant through the Camden Education Fund. We value this partnership with the Camden Education Fund as together we work to ensure equity and access to education for all of our students. Both Camden High School and Eastside High School were successful applicants, and each school was awarded nearly $250,000. And across the city, the award amounts totaled $1.1 million, so the Camden City School District received about half of that money. So we thank the teachers and the administrators who are ensuring that not only was a grant application well-written, but that they are being very innovative in their strategies and approaches to supporting all learners. Let's give Camden High and Eastside High School a round of applause. That is no small feat. And the next slide. Belly Bumper Fund at Martha F. Wilson Early Childhood Development Center. So check out our students at Martha F. Wilson Early Childhood Development Center using belly bumpers. This is a fun and active way to promote physical activity, balance, and coordination. As a reminder, we are still enrolling three- and four-year-olds into our early childhood program. It is a free, free, free preschool program, and it is one of the best in the state of New Jersey, so please share the information. We do have slots still available. Next slide. So we know what this is. EAGLES Eagles. These are cream scholars who pumped up for the game prior to the win, and maybe they brought the Eagles good luck, but they did a great job, and I hope you saw the TV footage of our young people just having fun, just enjoying. Principal Dyer is there in the middle, and you can see it was just a great day. Our board member Danielle Jackson was there as well, as many others, to support our young people. Next slide. Veterans Memorial Family Schools Kellogg's and Rabbits Check Presentation. I'm here smiling with our amazing vets cheerleaders. This is a great example of Donors Choose. Rabbits, who own ShopRite, and Kellogg donated $10,000 to Veterans School toward health and PE equipment, and that is definitely something to cheer about. So we're excited for the resourcefulness of our schools and leaders and teachers as they go after those funds. Next slides. Save the Date, we're going to forward to that one, celebrating Black History Month. Important dates to remember, our Black History Month celebration will be at H.B. Wilson this year on February 27, from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. We are looking forward to another amazing event as we celebrate the diversity of our learners and our community and our world. Next slide. Another important date to remember is February 6 for our next Parent Roundtable Meeting at Davis Family School. Our family engagement numbers are increasing, and we encourage everyone to attend and bring a family member. And finally, February 7 is President's Day. There will be no school for staff and students, and that is just a reminder. Thank you for your attention. We will transition back to the stage where our board president or his designee will honor our retirees as we move forward to the ending of our meeting. Thank you.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for this privilege of honoring these individuals of retirement. As I look at these numbers, you got over 130 years collectively of service that they provided to the district. First with Bruce Hicks, Custodian A1 with 32 years and two months. We have Joan Kane, Teacher ESL, 25 years. We have Evelyn Mendez, Teacher Elementary, 25 years and nine months. We have Marie Sherrod, School Counselor, 27 years and six months. And Georgine Schwartz, Teacher in Elementary with 25 years.
At this time, I'll turn it over to our board president to lead us through committee reports. But before we do that, I do want to take this opportunity, there was an error that was called out with regard to our translation on one of the slides, I think it was for H.B. Wilson. I'd like to thank you, Board Member, for sharing that with us. I'd like to also ask that any of those, if you see mistakes or anything like that, we're all human, right? So we'll get it back to our staff to make sure the translation is updated appropriately. But please, we're asking you to not yell out during the board meeting or not discuss it, just give the information to us, and that way we can do something about it and change it, and we can have that mutual respect that we want to see on display for all of our young people. So thank you for letting us know, and we will correct it and make sure it is appropriately fixed right away. Thank you to our board president.
Thank you, Superintendent. At this time, we will have our board committee reports, and we can start with Board Member Perez with Finance and Operations.
The Finance and Operations Committee met on Tuesday, January 21 via Zoom meeting. Present were Ms. Hakisha Taylor, President Board, Nami Nelson, Mr. John Morella, Board Member Daniella Jackson, Mr. Warren Bethia, and myself. As was already discussed in the presentation, we had three issues that were reported, and of those three, the first one was a misclassification of students, which we had the opportunity to correct immediately, so that is done. And the other two findings, which were repeated findings, we are diligently working on correcting those. And the biggest problem with that is the POS system, and the suggestions were made that we possibly have more regular checks and possibly retrain people who may not have been trained or on the POS system and how to handle the problems when the POS system is not working. So overall, it's been an amazing report because we went from seventeen to three. One, it's already been fixed. Two, will be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Perez. Next, we will have our Communications Committee with Board Member Garcia. Thank you.
Thank you, Board President. The Communication Committee recently held its first meeting on Tuesday, January 3. During this meeting, we established our primary objective, which is to strengthen communication with both internal and external stakeholders. We begin by reviewing the district's current communication tools, discussing ways to enhance their effectiveness and improve community interaction. Over the next few months, we will focus on two key initiatives. First, we are working on strategies to enhance the content shared on Channel 19, ensuring it highlights the district's priorities and accomplishments in a way that resonates with our audience. Second, we are excited to develop or roll out a monthly staff recognition campaign designated to celebrate the incredible contributions of our staff members. The committee consists of Deputy Superintendent Dr. Dana Walker, Chief Communications Officer Sheena Yara, Vice President Jeanette Alvarez, Board Member Cameron Hudson, and myself. We plan to meet on the first Friday of each month to continue building on these efforts and to ensure our initiatives align with the district's mission of putting students first. I look forward to providing updates on our progress as we work to enhance communication across the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Garcia. Next, we have our Teaching and Learning Committee. Who's reporting out? Board Member Merricks.
Okay, well, we had our meeting, and a couple of our board members were unavailable. They had prior engagement. It was myself, Dr. Walker, and we discussed absenteeism in pre-K and kindergarten, and we were talking about how important it is for our pre-K and our kinders to attend school because parents usually keep them home, and that's the crucial part of education. So we were discussing, you know, how could we counteract that and, you know, assist the parents and letting them know how important it is for children at the early education to attend school daily. We discussed a lot of other things, but we're going to revisit that next month when I discuss it with my board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Merricks. Does that conclude our committee reports? Is there one other? All right. We also have Policy and Governance. I apologize, Board Member Hudson.
Good evening, everyone. Cameron Hudson reporting out from the Policy and Governance Committee. We convened actually yesterday on the 27th. The committee's chaired by me, but it's also, in attendance were ABM Jackson, ABM Camacho, District Representatives Teresa Reese, Ashley Zimmerman, and Kimberly Buell Alvis. The items that we addressed yesterday or discussed were district updates, the representatives provided updates on legal matters, recruitment efforts, and affirmative action, Title IX initiatives. We also defined committee responsibilities. We reviewed committee roles, including the secretary, which Board Member Jackson is taking on. Board Member Camacho will be the spokesperson who will be reporting out each month to the rest of the board. And then we've reviewed and discussed several policies, including our visitor policy, which is number 1250. And then we continue discussions on updating and reviewing the LGBTQIA+ policies and also followed up on recommendations related to staffing and training opportunities for board members through GCN, which I'm going to connect with the board president about at a later date. We also educated or went over different ways to research and update policies, what that process looks like for the new board members, and also, yeah, and that's pretty much it. But this committee remains focused on ensuring policies are inclusive, equitable, and continues to meet the needs of Camden City students and families. Our next meeting will be on Monday, February 10 at 1:00 p.m. No further updates.
Thank you, Board Member Hudson. That concludes our committee reports. At this time, I'll turn it back over to Superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Board President. At this time, I'll turn it over to General Counsel to give us guidance through our public comment portion.
All right. Good evening. The Camden City School District welcomes the attendance and comments from all members of the public at its meetings. This public comment period is your time to present your comments to the board and the State District Superintendent. Each person who signed up to comment will have three minutes. You will be notified when your three minutes are up, and you cannot yield your time to another person. When it is your turn to speak, please request to unmute your microphone, state your name and address for the record. Please address all of your comments to either myself or the State District Superintendent. Please be courteous to your fellow community members and keep your comments within the timeframe allotted so that everyone has the opportunity to speak. At the end of your three minutes, the microphone will be silenced and your comments will have concluded. Please conduct yourself in a respectful manner. The First Amendment is not absolute, and the board can prohibit language that is inappropriate. In accordance with our Board Policy 1121, we may interrupt, warn, or terminate your statement, question, or inquiry when it is too lengthy. If a member of the public speaks about a staff member, interruption may be necessary to caution the speaker of the danger of slander. For anyone whose comments or actions harass, intimidate, or threaten the safety of any person, we will provide you with a warning or immediately end your comment time. We may request any person to leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum. We may request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person when that person prevents or disrupts a meeting with an act that obstructs or interferes with a meeting. We may call for a recess or an adjournment to another a meeting. We may call for a recess or an adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. And finally, we may waive any of the rules when necessary for the protection or privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the board meeting. After this public comment period is closed, the State District Superintendent or her designee will address your questions to the extent provided by law. So, it looks like we have six speakers tonight that signed up. The first is Kay Walters and then after Kay Walters is Karen Barelli-Luke.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's feeling well. It's a long night. So, what are the district's plans to be more proactive to combat how charters coerce parents into the false narrative of their superiority? How will the district share the glows of our purposeful district and our talented students in a more productive and proactive way that is in an effort to really combat this information? Two, how is the district going about making sure the gym for the new Eastside High is built to reflect the current gym dimensions? Because an auxiliary gym has not been and is still not necessary. All inside sports have been effectively played in the current gym space since the school's inception and was built. Three, the earlier disingenuous conversation of some on this board and city officials who insinuate Superintendent McCombs is ineffective and needs to be removed is another false narrative. Like the current situation in Washington, they are getting rid or attempting to get rid of things that work and are putting in singafance. Whew. I would hope that conversation is over. This district would not be where it is without Superintendent McCombs' leadership. Four, when can the school-based team expect the counseling doors to be installed? I believe doors to other areas in the building have been at Eastside installed. However, counseling is a confidential moment in need of privacy. And in May, during Mental Health Month, the school-based youth service program is sponsoring its annual Teen Mental Health Summit on Saturday, May 17th, 2025, at Eastside High School. We look forward to the district's support. Have a good evening.
All right. Up next is Ms. Luke and after her is Mr. Delgado.
Good evening. Karen Barelli-Luke, CEA representative, teacher, yes, a certified teacher, who is, whose responsibility to do what is right by the students, to do what is morally and ethically right. So, I just found out that the district has directed that permanent subs, who are not even CCSD employees, who are outsourced by Kelly and minimally have 60 college credits, be placed on student schedules as the teacher. Hear that correctly, the teacher. Of record, that very same sub is assigned to rosters in Genesis. They are grading our children's work and responsible for inputting grades. This sub's name will show up on the report cards and transcripts. Give me a second. And they are not certified teachers. Mind you, I have six years of college education and three teaching certifications that got me employed by this district where I instruct and grade and input grades. And a sub who is not a CCSD employee and not certified has the same access to grading and instruction of our children as me and even access to personal information of our children. There is something morally and ethically wrong. Now, back to the PE equipment, the storage that just started coming in that is going to take up a third of a health classroom. It was bad enough that I had a bunch of ninth graders that are smaller bodies, but now, starting Monday, it's 12th grade and we know 12th graders can be bigger humans that are going to need and require bigger space. So, that space is now going to be shared with all the phys ed equipment when it should have been a she-shed or a he-shed, whichever gender you want, outside where the trailers are locked up. You have trailers that have everything else, no other classroom. The classrooms are smaller than regular high school classrooms to begin with because we're at Kramer, is shared with equipment, except for one of the health classrooms, which is mine. And I would greatly appreciate if we can get some type of shed out where the trailers are for the phys ed equipment. Thank you.
All right. Up next is Mr. Delgado. It's my understanding that he has since left. After him is Ms. Gonzalez. I believe she left as well. Kenneth Miller and then Kimberly Bell.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kenneth Miller. I'm a school counselor at Big Picture Learning Academy and also the current indoor track coach. And in the spirit of celebrating student success, I just want to recognize these four gentlemen, if you could come up. They are part of the track team. They are the state four-by-two champions. Not only are they the state champions, they broke the state record. That was also, that was also held by Camden High School in 2019. In addition to that, these young men have just been outstanding athletes. Isaiah Lee, senior at Creative Arts, Chase Robinson, junior at BRIM, Jaden Still, junior at BPLA, and Chris Braxton, junior at BPLA. Now, I just wanted, in addition to their accomplishments, their relay team was at one point ranked number three in the nation. Currently, they're the top South Jersey team, relay team, number two in the state. And the fastest time they ran this year was the seventh fastest in the history of South Jersey. So, I just want to make sure they get recognized for their accomplishments. Thank you.
We are so proud of you. I'm just breaking protocol for a second and I'll give it to Board President. But thank you, Mr. Miller, for sharing that great accomplishment. We will highlight it as a part of our report in a more formal way. But before you leave, gentlemen, our Board President also would like to say something.
Thank you Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for coming up and sharing that information. Thank you to the track team. Again, let's give them another round of applause. And on behalf of the board, we would like to do something small, just to recognize you guys. So, we'll come together and figure out what that is, what that looks like, just to show our appreciation. So, thank you. Keep up the great work.
Okay. All right. So, that concludes all of our speakers. I'll turn it back over to Superintendent McCombs.
Thank you so much. Wow. Love it. That's a great note to end on. This is amazing. I want to thank everyone who participated in our public comment portion. We understand that my presentation was a little bit lengthier because we had a lot of ground to cover, some mandatory areas, but thank you for your patience. And if you want to go back and take a look at it, please feel free to do so. It's on our website. Mr. Waters, thank you so much for always being an advocate for not just all things Eastside, but for our young people and their mental, social, emotional health as well. So, you asked a specific question about what we plan to do to combat charters or to at least make sure that the good news that's happening in our district gets out in a way that's able to have us to be just as competitive, to make sure that our families in the community know that we are a school of choice. So, what we've done is we've all, a district of choice as well. What we've done is we have augmented our communications team. Sheena Yara has been doing a solo job of trying to get out all of the good things that are happening in our district. And so, there's been an addition to her team. She has a more junior staff member on her team, but someone who has experience and can help us to make sure that we elevate our marketing strategy. This Board of Education has constantly advocated, especially our Board President, for us to do a better job as a district, just as you have stated, echoing your sentiments, to make sure that everyone knows the great things happening. So, she just came on board in the past two weeks. So, as we move forward, we will have more information for you that shares the targeted and strategic approaches that they're going to use that are different, that are innovative and different than what we've done in order to get the word out because we all can see there's greatness happening, but we want to make sure that we magnify that. So, thank you for that comment and we will continue to update the board and the public. Next, how will we, how will the district make sure the gym is built as for the same capacity as it was? We will continue to advocate and work with our elected officials who are very instrumental in New Eastside High, but to ensure that that space is maximized. And we have had many conversations about just that. So, more to come, but you're definitely on target with what we as a district also are advocating for. Thank you for your support of my leadership. Thank you. I'm humbled. I do what I do to serve and the district that has poured so much into me and gave me my foundation, but I do thank you for publicly acknowledging your support. And then, finally, when can school-based, the school-based team expect the doors? So, I am not sure where the door project at Eastside High stands, but we will find out. There is a school-based youth services counseling room and the door was supposed to be replaced. But I will commiserate with our SBA and also Senior Director Bethia, who I believe is here as well, to get a timeline to you and your principal so that you can, we can make sure that that's taking place. We walked through the building. You showed it to me. We've seen it, but we need to make sure it's put in place because you are right. That is a confidential space. Excuse me. And we want our young people to feel safe with sharing and you need a door in order to do that. So, we will follow up on that expeditiously. And thank you for telling us about the School-Based Youth Services Mental Health Summit in May. We will begin to share that on our social media platforms. Ms. Barelli-Luke, thank you for staying. Thank you for sharing your concern about permanent subs being placed on student schedules as a teacher of record. So, our chief talent officer is not here. She had an emergency, but I will circle back with her in order to get a response that is complete and accurate to share. So, that, you know, I want to make sure I'm speaking with integrity. So, if you will allow me to reach out to her, get that information, and then circle back with you on a response, I would really appreciate it. Thank you for your patience. PE equipment taking up space. So, I'm going to ask that Tanya Wilson, who heads up that team, works with Principal Vega and Ellie Shanklin and Ellie Mercado, to come up with a solution. If there is no solution, I know we have the bi-weekly committee meetings that have been going very well with the Eastside High Committee leads and thank you because of your advocacy. We now have a physical education teacher on that committee. And so, we will take that issue up as well and thought partner and try to brainstorm solutions for how to make sure our teachers have the best space that we can afford them. But thank you for flagging it for us. And Mr. Miller, again, I think we already said it, he's gone, but thank you to Mr. Miller and the team for just your accomplishments and we look forward to celebrating and highlighting you. That concludes my responses. I'll turn it over now to SBA Taylor to take us through the agenda items.
Board President comments?
Board President comments. Just kidding. Board President comments. I'm sorry. I'll turn it over to our Board President. It's been a long one, people. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent. At this time, are there any board members that have comments? Start off with our board vice president Alvarez.
Thank you Board President. I just want to thank you Superintendent and your team for the acknowledgement this month. We greatly appreciate you and we thank you for the, well, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'll let the other board members speak. I also want to congratulate the track team. I know that Mr. Miller left, but kudos to you. It's just an acknowledgement of what you're doing to the team. So, congratulations and have a great evening.
Thank you Board Member Alvarez. Any other board members would like to share anything at this time? Board Member Hudson?
Yeah, I'd like to echo the sentiments of VP Alvarez. Thank you Superintendent so much for the acknowledgement as well as Principal Montague from Davis. I really, really, really appreciate that. And a shout out to Sheena back there. She did a remarkable social media campaign just highlighting the board members. So, just give her a round of applause. And just, just thank you for everyone who continues to come out and give us your thoughts and, you know, suggestions on how we can do better and just seeing the updates that are going on around the district each month. So, that is, that's about it.
Thank you Board Member Hudson. Are there any other board members? Board Member Garcia?
I just wanted to say congratulations to Sheena. It's a pleasure working with her in the Communications Committee along with Dr. Walker and all the other board members. Congratulations, Sheena. Good job.
Thank you Board Member Garcia. Are there any other board members, board member comments? So, I would like to say a couple of things quickly. So, I know, so first echoing board VP Alvarez, I thank you Superintendent and to your administration. Sheena, special shout out for the acknowledgement of board members for Board Member Month. Shout out to all the board members. Give yourselves a round of applause. You know, thank you for showing up daily to the events and the schools and, you know, whatever things may be taking place, whether that's lunchtime, taking off, after work, you know, your commitment and your dedication is appreciated. I know Board Member Jackson had to leave, but we have a full nine-member board. I think that's something else to give yourselves a round of applause for. And, you know, I just want to stress the importance of us working together. I know sometimes we don't agree on everything, but especially in the challenging times now, us staying unified to do the work to serve our kids, our students, and our community. And we're committed to working with our superintendent, the administration, and all of us to do the work that's needed. You know, everything is not always spoken about. Everything is not always announced, but there's some work that's taking place daily and I don't think it takes place by one individual. It's the group effort and us, you know, working together in order to get it done. I know it was spoken about the acknowledgement of staff members as we move forward and I just want to, you know, stress that, highlight that. All our staff is important. We don't feel like there's one position that's more important than the next. Thank you, Sheena. Thank you to the superintendent. This has been a conversation since last school year and I think we found a way to try to find ways to acknowledge everybody. Unfortunately, it won't be all at once. So, you know, one by one, we'll take time to recognize all the hard work that our staff does day in and day out to keep our district moving forward. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I would like to acknowledge Principal Montague. I know staff show up all the time, but I see her as a principal present, you know, for every board member, board meeting. So, just thank you, thank you, thank you. I know Mr. Waters spoke about, you know, just our efforts and I know the superintendent spoke about, you know, things that we're doing and we're talking about as far as marketing and outreach. And, you know, I just want everybody to understand that we don't have the same access and the same capabilities as our counterparts at times. So, some things aren't as easy to do, but Superintendent and her administration has worked hard to find different ways to be able to match those efforts and hopefully to surpass those efforts of some of our counterparts, just to make sure that the things that are taking place in our traditional public schools are put out there. And that's all I have. So, thank you. At this time, I'll turn it back over to- At this time, I'll turn it back over to Superintendent. Thanks.
Thank you, Board President. At this time, I'll turn it to the board secretary to present the January Board Agenda. Items for approval?
Good evening again. There are a few items I would like to highlight, the first one being the audit, and I'd like to give any space for Board President to share any questions or receive any comments from board members as it relates to the 23-24 Annual Audit.
So I'll open it up to any of our board members. Any questions, any comments? So I don't have any questions, just a statement. Thank you for working hard, you know, with the audit and also to, you know, look at, you know, things that we've done and just making sure moving forward that, you know, we're not in that same situation. And also just for the amount of audits that we have now, obviously the work that has been done to decrease that, you know, obviously has to be recognized and acknowledged first and foremost. So thank you for those efforts and appreciate your continued work.
Thank you. And I'd also like to publicly thank the business office staff. They are amazing. I walked into an amazing team. So kudos to them for improving internal controls. If there are no other questions about the audit, I would also like to highlight donations. We did receive, well, the acceptance of SDA funds. So on an annual basis, the SDA, or School Development Authority, gives former Abbott districts, which Camden is one of, an emergent capital project allocation. This year's allocation, 24-25, is a million dollars and that's found on page seven of your agenda. If you look at that agenda item when you have a moment, it will itemize for you the capital projects plans that we are planning to do with that one million dollars. Any questions about the SDA 24-25 emergent capital projects allocation? Great, hearing none. The last thing I'd like to highlight are donations, if I could find them. There were two donations, one for a scholarship. Bear with me, let me, I thought I had it earmarked. Yes. On page 16, I would just like to publicly thank the Camden County Association of School Administration for donating a $500 scholarship for a graduating student. And I'd like to thank an anonymous donor for $500 earmarked for student lunch, student coats, or student footwear. That concludes my highlights, but I will take any questions if there are any.
Board Member Perez?
It's not a question, but I realized that after I gave my finance highlights, there is something that I really do want to acknowledge here tonight because I know that everyone is important, but sometimes people behind the scenes who do so much work get little acknowledgement. So I do want to focus again on Mr. Morella, on Mr. Bethia, and Alicia, I believe her name is. Please, please let them know how much we appreciate their hard work, not only with our children, but all the children that attend the schools here in the city of Camden. So I think that even though they're not here, they too deserve a big round of applause.
Thank you, Board Member Perez. Any questions, any comments from any other board members? Thank you.
If nothing else, State District Superintendent, please share the approval.
Thank you, SBA Taylor. Board Secretary, in accordance with powers vested in the State District Superintendent, according to NJSA 18A 7A-35, I hereby approve all January 28, 2025 Board Agenda items. If nothing more, I will turn it back to our board secretary to call for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Hudson. Is there a second? Second by Board Member Garcia. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you so much. Have a good evening.